Good, good evening everyone. And welcome to our, hopefully our final budget estimates meeting. In a very long process of strategic planning and budgeting. I want to start off by acknowledging that we're holding this meeting on the traditional territories of the coast and straight sailors people. Known today as the Esquimalt and Songheas First Nations and their connection to these lands continue to this day. I also want to just let everybody know who's coming forward to speak. If you're coming to the microphone, that you will be recorded. We are live streaming this and it'll be recorded for archive purposes. We're trying a little bit of a different format this time in the sense that we are going to go through the grant applications first thing in the meeting. We've often done this at the end where it's been pretty painful. And we're going to basically just, we have very detailed applications in front of us. And so rather than doing a presentation from every applicant, we're basically going to put it to council if there's any questions. We'll call you forward and we're going to do them in order that we have them here. I will ask if there's anything that perhaps isn't captured in the document that you really want to make a point about, I will invite the applicants forward to speak to that as well. And after that, we're then going to go back and we're going to go through all of our deliberations, which is looking at a lot more of the capital pieces. And we're actually going to be doing the deliberations of the individual grants at the end of this meeting, time allowed. What we've done this time is agreed to set a total amount and we may have to come back to this at a future meeting to sort out the individual grants. So we're trying to let you guys go home and not spend four hours sitting here listening to us go through the details of a budget. So with that, we'll start the first one. Is there anything else that staff want to add to that before we know? Okay. Up first for discussion is the request for financial assistance in the amount of $2,000 to the of Victoria. Pretty good idea that it's Charlene and Joe in the audience, councillor Charlene and Joe, here to talk to that. This is for the fireworks and pieces of Canada Day. Is there any questions on this? This is one that we've had multiple years. Nope. That's it? Anything you want to say as part of this before we move on to the next item? Councillor?
I'll be quick. Mayor Council, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I've been organizing Canada Day for the last 19 years and I did that. It started when I was president of the Intercultural Association. Because although being born and raised here, I learned very quickly the pride people have of being Canadian and the opportunities they seek in trying to become Canadian citizens. So I consider this a regional event and it is all our opportunity of all our citizens to be able to come down and celebrate their pride of being Canadian. So I hope you're able to support this event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number, by the way, if anybody wants to stick around for a few more minutes, I should explain. Unfortunately councillor Braithwaite is quite ill and will not be joining us tonight, but councillor Zelka has just got caught up a little bit and is running a little late. So he informed me he didn't have any specific questions on top of his mind, but I was going to give him the opportunity when he came in if he had any questions to ask them. So he may want to stick around for a few minutes until he arrives. I think you're probably pretty safe not to worry about it too much for that first one. Second item, Community Association of Oak Bay in the amount of $2,000. Are there any questions from council to the community association? I assume there's someone here from the community association? There you go. Welcome. No questions. Is there anything you want to add to your application package before? We were obviously fairly familiar with the association, but you're welcome to come forward and say a few words if you wish.
I think it's pretty inclusive.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Item number 5C then, request for financial assistance for Friends of Uplands Park in the amount of $2,500. This one is again a mixed piece and welcome.
Yep.
If you can just give your name and-
I'm Margaret Lidkey.
Into the microphone, please.
Sorry. I have a big teacher voice. My name is Margaret Lidkey and I'm the president of the Friends of Uplands Park Society.
Welcome Ms. Lidkey and a society now.
We are.
Yes, exciting.
This is to try and do our succession planning. We were approached and told we could get some funding from Gaming Commission if we formed a society and applied for funding for people doing two different jobs. One as an ecologist doing all the botanical part of it and the other would be as a teacher for the program, which is as you can see in the application for funding, we have asked for a little bit of money for honorary for people helping in those areas because we were turned down by the Gaming Commission after all of that, all of the creation of the society, because the people in our volunteer group don't get paid. So it's a catch 22. So we don't know what to do and would really appreciate expertise, you know, from the Oak Bay Council and anybody else on how we can solve the catch 22 problem. Okay?
That's not part of your grant application. Asking for expertise as part of your grant. Just anything else you wish to add before?
Yes, one of the other succession plans that we have, of course, in light of the need for us to continue to restore healthy natural areas or to restore natural areas into healthier ecosystems, is the support of the Greater Victoria Green Team. Okay? Because we do not have the resources, the financial resources to hire a now full-time person to do the pulling together volunteer program like the Sanich Municipality. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up, 5D, request for financial assistance in the amount of $2,000 from the Greater Victoria Bike to Work Society. Again, one grant that we've had many years and have funded for many years. Are there any questions from council? Is there someone from the Bike to Work Society here? That makes it easy. We won't ask any questions. Item number 5E, request for financial assistance for $8,000 Green Teams of Canada. Welcome. This is probably worth coming for because this is a substantial increase from what was given last year. So you have some explanation laid out in here, but perhaps you might want to just touch on that.
Sure, so last year we applied for-
If you could just give your name and municipality of residence, that'd be great.
My name is Amanda. Amanda Evans. I run the program, Greater Victoria Green Team, full-time staff, the only full-time staff for the program. And right now I'm in Victoria, but I'm a renter, so my mom is in Oak Bay, if that matters. But so last year we applied for 5,000 in the hopes of organizing five activities and we received half of that, so we organized two restoration activities and one beach cleanup with that funding. We asked for the same amount of money from every municipality for the one activity and so we're, this year we're hoping to organize eight activities with that amount. And three of those, I reached out to all the stewardship groups that we work with in Oak Bay to ask them how many times they'd like to see us work with them, like minimum. And Friends of Uplands Park said three, Anderson Hill Park said two, talked to Montieth Belker Creek and Harling Point, Matt Fairbarns wants us to help there. And then I left one open to see how it goes, but so that's sort of what I want to get to is eight activities per year, but it's not restricted to that number.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from council?
I just had one little thing to add from Christina because one of the benefits that we tried to bring to our program or to other groups through our program is infusing volunteers into existing groups. And Christina said this year, a lot of our volunteers branched out to join her subsequent activities after our collaborated one. She had five volunteers over a couple of months volunteer contribute 50 hours and she said that they were some of her main volunteers that came out. So really happy to see that infusion of volunteers into existing programs here. So she just sent this to me today.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Neam? Just wait a second, we have a question.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for the very good work you do in this community and in other communities. I know it's, and I think it really segues nicely into the other work that, for example, Friends of Uplands Park is doing. If you had, this may not be fair and you don't have to answer it because it's, I'd have a challenge answering this, but if you, what would be your top four projects in this community?
The ones who got backed, well, Anderson Hill, Uplands Park for sure, and Montieth Belker Creek and Harling Point would be the main ones that I spoke to. But we're hoping to run at least more than one at Uplands Park and Anderson Hill, especially Uplands Park, just because of the need.
Okay, thank you. And does your budget work like, so you had eight and you're asking 16, is it like two grand?
Yeah, so the cost that we incur is 2,000 per activity. And then we ask for matching funds from municipalities and it's the same across the board. Some municipalities give a little bit more, but that's there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you very much for your time and for coming out tonight. We're on to 5F, the amount of $20,000 for Francophone Games. Is there representative from the, hello? Why don't you come forward, I know I have a quick question. Is there any questions from council of the, jeu de Francophonie, Canada? Do I try my effort at French once?
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Just again, this was a fun, sort of a preliminary fund last year. If you just explain, obviously it's the significant amount because the event is happening in 2019, what would this money be used for?
In fact, my name is Casey Edmonds. I'm the newly appointed executive director for the Canadian Francophone Games. The games are actually in July of 2020, so as we near, get closer to the event, we're getting closer and closer to a year from the event. So we're really at the planning stages and detailing all of the different logistical elements. So we work very, very closely with the school district at Oak Bay High. We've met with all of some staff, including the principal, including Mark Walsh from the secretary, including staff from Oak Bay Rec and from the city, because this event will host 1,200 people from across Canada, 1,000 of them being French-speaking youth, 14 to 18. So to answer your question, those funds will go into supporting the planning and detailing of all of those logistics, which include from the moment that the youth arrive at the airport, at the Victoria Airport, to getting them set up in Oak Bay High where they'll be staying and at Willows, to organizing some of the key events, the opening ceremonies at Willows Park or closing ceremonies, all of the competition events that are in and around Oak Bay High, talking with Royal Victoria Yacht Club, for example, for the sailing competitions and detailing some of those key elements like how do you feed 1,200 people three meals a day without there being cafeteria at Oak Bay? So all of the planning that goes into it, the funds, the operational funds that we have currently are typically just our office, office rent and then it contributes to some of the staffing costs, including my salary and then come towards into fall, moving into 2020 when we start doing volunteer recruitment and then really moving forward into the final stages of the planning.
Okay, thank you. And as I'm looking at the financial plan, it has in there $50,000 over three years. We did 10,000 last year, you're expecting 20,000 this year, 20,000 the next year.
Exactly, yes.
Is there any other sources of revenue that you've, that have changed over that time or is that number expected to decrease, increase, stay the same?
No, the amount that we've requested from the different municipalities taking part, including Oak Bay, the City of Victoria, Sanich and also Esquimalt is tabled at 50,000. We've confirmed funding from the federal government, which is 1.98 million on the 4.4 million dollar budget. Locally, that looks a little different, just in terms of expenses that are really catered to everything that's happening in Victoria. That being said, we are going to announce very shortly the funding that we have been confirmed from the province, which was this sort of loose, I was going to say loose cannon, but that's not very appropriate, but more that we hadn't yet confirmed any funding from the province, but that will be announced very shortly. So that will confirm the tenure of the games. It will for sure support us in moving forward in launching our sponsorship package and our partnership plans for the local communities. So the amount of 50,000 is the amount that was requested from the four different municipalities who are taking part in hosting the event.
And I know what last year in this conversation happened, there was some discussion about some of that funding possibly being just in-kind, so pieces, so is that still part of the understanding?
Yeah, so come, come to the request for funding in 2020, that's when we'll be able to really invest all of our requests for in-kind. At this point, it's hard to evaluate exactly. We have obviously some ideas. We've painted out the portrait of what we're looking at, but our requests and the clear needs from the municipality in terms of in-kind will mostly come out of our requests for funding in 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Councillor Zelka, welcome. We're just finishing up questions on the Francophone Games. Any questions? I'll be, nope, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on to 5G, which is the Maritime Museum of British Columbia Society. Is there someone here from that society? Anybody here from the Maritime Museum? I don't see anybody, so we can't really take questions. If there's any questions that the staff might be able to ask, we can, but no, not seeing any. Okay, thank you very much. The next is 5H, which is the North Oak Bay Community Association. Is there someone here from North Oak Bay? Are there any questions of the North Oak Bay Community Association? I'm not seeing any. Do I have any questions? Why don't you come forward, introduce yourself. This is actually the first year we've had an ask from the North Oak Bay Community Association.
Hi, my name's Pete Rose and I live in the eastern slopes of Mount Tommy. And my colleague over there, Peter DeGroot, is the president. I'm the treasurer, so my name is on this thing, so consequently I'm here. And what would you like to know?
I guess you haven't asked for money in the past, so I see it's largely just for some pieces of equipment to hold events. Is there any specific events that you're looking at?
Yeah, so what we, when we're filling out the form, basically we need a few hundred dollars to look at becoming a society. We need some money for things like paper for newsletters. We now have a local church who does our printing for us for free, but we don't know how long that's going to happen. We do distribute a newsletter every six weeks to a month around the community. We're also working with the UVIC Geography and Anthropology Departments in taking some students and we're looking at doing things like focus groups and creating things of community maps. There's an example I have here is Oakland's engaging neighborhood community map, thinking of putting on focus groups in the community to talk about densification, so we can kind of get upstream on that because I know there's lots of pressure from university and people developing certain parts of Oak Bay. And we always feel like, you know, we never get the, some input, we feel like we haven't had input the last couple of years, so we want to try and get some things going so we can give you folks some things to consider as a part of that process. All this is kind of two bits us to death, you know, $20 here, $100 there for different things, so that's what this money would be going to.
Okay, thank you. Is North Oak Bay Community Association a society?
No.
Okay. And the other question I had is just, it's rare for us to fund almost all of the budget and you're asking for, in your budget, you submitted $1,000 of the $1,100 total. Do you have other sources of revenue?
Yes, we have donations from the people in the community, so we put things on like, I think we put on a trunk sale or it was garage sale from the trunk in the church parking lot last year and people donate and we have esteemed speakers such as yourself coming up to give a talk and we have a jar out there and people put some money in once in a while. And then there's some donations, some people in the community will just, you know, give us a couple bucks here and there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Oh, councillor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. I can just share a comment that I was very pleased to see the North Oak Bay Community Association follow up on not just my suggestion, but some others, for them to put this grant application in because of the good works that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, councillor Green?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rose, for coming tonight. Are there plans then to become a society? You did mention that you were looking at society costs.
Yeah, we're considering becoming a society and I guess that's, you know, coming out of Peter, I don't know if he wants to talk to that, but I know in my perspective is there's, you know, half a dozen of us who've been volunteering for the last couple of years, doing a lot of the work and I think to continue this, we'd like to kind of get it open there, allow the community to come in and choose who they want to be, the different executive and be more a proactive way. We found that by, we become a society, that might be a way to do that because we have to have all the fulfilling of the bylaws of a society will make it, I think, a lot more of a democratic organization.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rose. Item 5F, we have a request for financial assistance in the amount of $6,500 in the Oak Bay Figure Skating Club. If my memory serves me, we didn't have this grant last year, but did the year before. Are there any questions of council of Oak Bay Figure Skating? Is someone from the Oak Bay Figure, oh, good. Couple people, did I see a hand go up, councillor Green, did you have a question?
Wait till after and then I'll ask it.
Well, they're coming, okay. Councillor Appleton, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, worship. And pardon me because I was not on council when this was last reviewed, so I'm just wanting to clarify here, this maybe this is a question for staff, as I understand it, this is really primarily money for facilities rental, which is our own facility. So essentially this is almost like a budget line and it's kind of returning to the budget because this is going to return to Parks, Rec and Culture revenue, if I understand this correctly, right?
Why don't I ask that? Welcome, I just have your name and residency and municipality and you can answer that question.
Thank you. My name's Michelle Carr and I'm a resident of Oak Bay. Really happy to live in this community and I'm also the secretary for the Oak Bay Figure Skating Club. We're a club with skaters from range, the ones that just put their skates on to competitive skaters, so primarily youth focused. And every two years we do put on an ice show to enable our skaters to showcase primarily their artistic skills to the community. And we skate out of the Oak Bay Rec Center six days a week and three of those days were there twice a day. And we also use the off-ice facilities as well and this is year-round with just a couple of weeks break. And you're correct, we are asking, requesting support for our ice rental fees and one of the reasons I did come up, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but we do now have accurate budget item around the exact amount for our ice rental fees, which is $8,333 for the additional amount to enable our skaters to practice and for the evening of the ice show. So we are requesting for partial reimbursement of the fees that we provide to the Oak Bay Rec Center for this particular item, which occurs every couple of years. We were very pleased to be the regional Vancouver Island champions and so super proud this year to come out to the community and showcase a different arts event and athletic event for everyone to enjoy. Thanks for your consideration.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Carr, and congratulations.
Thank you. And I don't know if it's appropriate to leave the updated figures with staff?
You can leave them with staff. Councillor Green, you have one more question?
Yes, I was just asking councillors who were here in the last term, I wasn't. Was there a reason that there was no funding granted last time or?
It's a semi, or a biannual.
Oh, it's every two years? I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item number 5J, request for financial assistance in the amount of $5,000 for Oak Bay Heritage Foundation. Is there anybody here from the foundation? Okay, seeing nobody. You can welcome to ask questions of staff. Seeing none, all right, we'll move on. 5K, financial assistance in the amount of 4,700 for Oak Bay Lawn Bowling Club. Someone here from that organization? Welcome. And are there any questions? Yes, there are, so why don't you come forward, same, same regular rule, just the name and municipality?
I'm Brad Merchant, I'm the president of the Oak Bay Lawn Bowling Club and I live in Oak Bay.
Welcome, Mr. Merchant. And councillor Neam, you had a question?
Well, it may be to staff through your chair, really, because as I understand it, you're asking for monies to pay for upgrading of windows, which makes sense. I was just wondering because the municipality owns the facility. I guess I'm asking this of staff through your chair? Who am I asking, I guess?
I'll direct it, just ask the question.
Okay, thank you. So if we own the building, is the onus, I mean, these monies do come from council essentially anyways, but how is it that the user now is applying to us to pay for the windows of the building that we own? Is this the right way to do this?
And certainly all the upgrades have been paid for in terms of upgrades. Mr. Merchant, I'll give the question to you or Mr. Herman, whoever has the most knowledge on this.
The Oak Bay Lawn Bowling Club has an unsigned license to occupy the two buildings at the club. That, that license to occupy, I guess basically says you can have the buildings at no cost, you look after everything. But as I said, it's an unsigned agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Councillor Green?
Sorry to ask the obvious question of you or staff, why is the agreement unsigned? Thank you.
Oh, the dangerous why question in a meeting, that's a maybe difficult question to answer.
There was, there wasn't an agreement signed and it was signed by the former mayor and that, that agreement had expired. I understand that a new license to occupy was drafted, but it has never been signed. And why it hasn't been signed, that I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just in general terms, the ask here is, I guess because this is an exceptional cost is the rationale for the ask in this case. Have, in the past, have you, has the municipality paid for, these are really repairs more than they are, just sort of simple, some of it's simple replacement and some of it's repairs. What has been the dividing line in the past, do you know? Mr. Merchant?
I don't know what the, that dividing line has been in the past, since I've been a club member since 2010 and to my knowledge, I don't think the district has paid for any kind of repairs or anything. The district does pay for the water and a few other things. We pay for the electricity and the heat and that and all the repairs. For example, we expanded one of the buildings, Anderson House, recently and that total close to, when the Pilsol came in, it was close to $90,000. And we got a grant from the federal government, plus we had a contingency amount of our own and that depleted all our savings and we used that to pay for that expansion of the club. And that's why you're seeing this is our first grant ever, is because we don't have any contingency plans. Right now, we've done a fundraiser with our, with our members just to cover the operating costs for this year because we don't have enough money with our dues and the typical grants we might get through gaming and so forth.
Councillor Green?
Yes, if I can ask staff, is there an intention to sign a licensing agreement? Because technically then, the Lawn Bowling Club is using a facility for which there is nothing on paper, so I'm just, I'm a little concerned about that, I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Your worship, we have a number of excellent community partners that use some of our facilities that we own, the Scouts, the Girl Guides, Lawn Bowling, and we're working towards upgrading all of those leases and this is one, so we've, we've done, as you may recall, we've done the Girl Guides, we've done the Scouts and there are still a few others that we need to work on, so we're working towards- working towards, uh, completing those.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Green. Uh, just one last question, because I know the, the impetus for this was that there was some vandalism and, and some windows were broken. Are there any, uh, potential improvements to security to perhaps make sure that the new windows don't get, don't get broken in the future?
Well, we had two, uh, break-ins, uh, one in April of last year and then one in November. Uh, we do have insurance on the building, but our deductible is $2,500 and that's two different occasions. So $5,000 to replace the windows. We don't have that money in the first place. Um, in terms of, uh, the security part, what, what the people that broke in before, they, we, we're licensed. We have a license for liquor there. And they broke in, they broke into our fridge where the alcohol is kept as, as is where our, uh, cash float is. So they took our cash float on both occasions and they took, uh, an older iPad on each occasions. The first time it occurred, uh, nothing happened, like we, nobody was found to have done it. The second time, uh, the officers, uh, were notified by the neighbors that somebody was in the building. A female, uh, person was apprehended and there was suspicion about a male, but charges were never laid against that male. We've, and we've installed, uh, one of our club members and, uh, donated a safe. So we've installed a safe for the, uh, for the money part. We still have a padlock on the fridge where the, uh, beer and the wine is kept. So we know how secure that is. In terms of the windows, um, the one estimate, uh, the one in, the one window by the door, it's Georgian glass, um, if we've got the grant. And that's a little bit harder to break. We have improved our, um, our lighting around there with motion detector lights. And hopefully that'll work. But to, um, in terms of security, I used to be the assistant deputy minister of the B C Corrections Branch and I built most of the jails in the province. So I, I know the cost it would take to put security in those buildings. We have gone to prices alarm and we asked them for an estimate. And those are just motion detectors in the building and triggers on the windows if they were broken. Uh, the equipment cost would be about $1,100 a year and, uh, monitoring about $50 a month. We don't have that. And I, truthfully, I don't think that would stop anybody from breaking in. We'd still have a broken window and they'd run away and we'd still be stuck with putting a new window in.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Oh, Councilor Zelka?
I wish to express my sincere thanks to the Lawn Bowling Association for taking such care of our asset.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Merchant. Oh, Councilor Appleton?
Uh, thank you, worship. Very quickly through you two staff, I'm just wanting to confirm that the, the facility is included in our asset management documents and, and is the, the value of the, uh, the value of the, the upgrade essentially that it appears the Lawn Bowling Club's put into the, into the buildings, is that reflected in our, in our current, our current documents?
Mr. Jones?
Your worship, the facility itself is included in our asset management plan. I don't have a lot of details, but it is one of the facilities that is included.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Merchant. All right, we have item five L, financial assistance, $6150 Oak Bay Sea Rescue Society. I see a couple of members here in the audience. Are there any questions? I, I have a question, so why don't you come forward here? Again, just the same process. You just give your name and municipality.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Justin Stevenson. I, uh, was the treasurer when this, uh, application was made. I'm now the vice president, uh, as of last, uh, Monday's AGM. Um, and, uh, I'm a resident of Oak Bay.
Welcome, Mr. Stevenson. Uh, you have a, a very specific list of, of, of projects on here. Um, is there, uh, I'm just want to make sure I'm going to ask this question because this is always a bit of a, uh, you, you're undergoing a significant fundraising for a boat at, at the moment. Um, and these are for other ancillary pieces that are to, to improve the safety of the, of the crew, I understand. Could you just give a quick overview of what it is that you're asking for?
Yes, your worship. Uh, this is specifically for, uh, to pay the 50% of the cost of new, uh, dry suits, uh, personal protective equipment for, uh, the five, uh, night crew, uh, members and the five day crew members, um, to match the funding that, um, we have already raised through our annual, um, largely through our Christmas, uh, fundraising campaign, uh, to the public. So it's specifically for the, the purchase of these dry suits.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Item five M, uh, requests for $35,000 Oak Bay Volunteer Services Society. This is a grant that we have provided every year for an awful lot of years. Um, is there anyone here? Yes, there is. Uh, are there any questions of Oak Bay Volunteer Society? I'm not seeing any. All right, thank you. Uh, item five N is in November, $10,000 Vancouver Island South Film and Media Commission. Is there someone here from, there, there is? Thank you. Uh, however, this is also again a repeat of, of a grant that we've had multiple years, uh, but often has questions. So are there any questions of the applicant? Okay, there we go. Um, item, I should invite you forward. Is there anything you wanted to say specifically this year?
Well, I'm concerned if I lose my volunteer job if I don't.
Why don't you come forward and just again, give your name and your, uh, and your, uh, and your municipality and go forward.
My name is Darlene Tate. Uh, I sit on the board of the Film Commission and I am a, a brand new resident of Oak Bay, um, and very happy to be here. The Film Commissioner, Kathleen Gilbert, who typically you would meet at these meetings, um, has done some damage to her back. She couldn't make it tonight, but she wanted me to pass along a couple of things. Um, first off, um, on behalf of the board, the entire Film Commission, um, that, um, we indicate just how appreciative we are of the partnership we feel like we have with Oak Bay. Uh, Oak Bay has been very film friendly, uh, to the visiting productions, uh, as well as being long-term, uh, financial supporters. So, uh, we're very appreciative of that. Um, and to remind people that we, uh, the Film Commission does this all on a budget of, uh, $250,000 a year. And last year, 2018, was our biggest year ever. Uh, we surpassed our last record-breaking year of 2015. Um, the productions that came into the CRD were responsible for generating $21 million of direct spending in the CRD. So on a budget of, uh, $250,000, we're very proud of what the Commission, uh, has done with the funds. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm not going to go through and list, uh, some of the things that, uh, Kathleen had asked about what the Commission does. I believe we've made our case here before. Um, so, um, with that, I just want to again extend, uh, uh, our thanks and appreciation to Oak Bay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, item number...
Your worship, sorry for just jumping in there. Um...
There's an amended piece on here. Is that what you're going to raise? Go ahead.
Just wanted to, uh, I guess, uh, from staff's perspective, express our appreciation to, uh, the staff at Parks, Recreation and Culture for the work that they do to accommodate, uh, uh, the industry and, uh, to the, uh, the public as well. Because you know what? At times it, it does pose some challenges. We have streets that are blocked at times. Uh, but this, uh, uh, industry brings in significant investment into our community. So, uh, to, uh, to Ray and his crew, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Um, item, uh, oh, in this list, is that right? Yes. Uh, for the Victoria Sexual Assault Center, this is a, uh, a new item as the, yes. Um, I'll invite you forward, just I think as a new item and someone that's been in the news lately, positively. Um, uh, there may be some questions for you. So if you just give your, your name and municipality and then we'll get to that.
Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Grace Lor and I live in Victoria.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. And are there questions at this time? Um, Councilor Nate?
Well, I guess I was just wondering, th- thank you for the very good work you do, by the way. I, I know it's, it's a very valuable resource for those, uh, who are near this. So thank you for that. I, I was just curious that it's this year, um, I, we've never had this before, as I don't believe, but, um, and I notice you're asking for money from City of Victoria and Sanich. So I guess what my question is, who do you, who have you received funds from in the past and why are you coming here? This is not to denigrate what you're doing by any means. I'm just wondering why it's getting rearranged here?
Yes.
Your funding sources.
Thanks, Councilor Nate. I, obviously it might just be worth noting that there was an announcement, uh, by the province just a few days ago that they're willing to fund $100,000 a year for the next two years at least. So, uh, and, and I was, my question is related also to that, how does that affect the ask here as well tonight? So thank you.
Thank you very much for your questions. Um, yes, in the past, we have received, uh, grant money through the City of Victoria. Um, we have never gone to the other municipalities in the region, though we are a regional service. Um, the clinic itself was open in 2016, um, with an initial grant from the provincial government, but didn't come with any, uh, long-term or predictable funding of any sorts. So since 2016, we have been every year trying to secure $204,000 to keep the clinic doors open. Um, what that doesn't include is the downstream costs, uh, associated with providing more service to people within the first seven days of a sexual assault because we then see them again for victim services, uh, trauma counseling, crisis counseling, et cetera. Um, so this year, um, we, uh, were nearing the start of fiscal with no sense at all of where that $204,000 would come from. So we have been undertaking a number of efforts to secure funding and, um, move to a more sustainable, um, predictable funding model for the long-term viability of this critical service. So, um, what I have been doing is taking a tour of the CRD to, uh, have conversations like this. Um, I have been to Central Sanich, uh, who has, uh, indicated some support, though that hasn't been passed. We expect it to. Um, Sanich, uh, supported our grant for the first time, um, uh, both View Royal and Langford as well for the first time. So, um, that's, uh, why now and not other years. Um, uh, in regards to the very positive announcement that was, um, last week, um, we have received funding from the provincial government, um, in the amount of $100,000 a year for two years. That covers, uh, less than 50% of the cost to keep the clinic, um, open. Um, and again, not including the downstream costs. So, uh, what, uh, that announcement means, um, is hugely significant. Um, it doesn't, uh, adjust or affect, um, our requests before you now. Um, we're close to having the funding for this clinic secured for this year. Um, with, uh, your support and hopefully, uh, the support of Victoria, we would be there. So, um, it's my hope not to come back to any of these municipalities, um, with all due respect, um, not to have to be back next year. Um, but certainly not the year after that. We need, this is not a feasible model for, uh, a clinic that provides access to justice and, uh, forensic care. So, um, it doesn't change my ask now, but I do sort of frame our requests with the hope that, that we really don't intend or hope to be back every year.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Any other questions? Councilor Green?
Through you, your worship. Um, thank you for coming, Ms. Lor, and thank you for the work you do. Can you tell me, I, I don't know if you have the data there, but what, um, how many residents of Oak Bay roughly have you served in the last year?
Um, so, uh...
Thank you.
Yes, so about, um, 11% of the sexual assault responses we do, um, are in Oak Bay or nearby. We use postal codes, um, of survivors to, uh, do that so the lines are not clear. Um, um, we also, our police, uh, interview rooms are booked. Um, and, uh, as I understand it, Sanich Police takes on these particular crimes, um, for Oak Bay residents. And so about, uh, I think it's 37% of our police interview room bookings are through Sanich. So some of those would, would include Oak Bay.
And just a follow-up question. How many clients a year are you serving, do you think? Thank you.
So the center as a whole, uh, serves a ton across the region. So my answers there were specifically in relation to the clinic and the sexual assault response team, the emerg, the emergency crisis support. Um, I don't know the number for all our services. Um, for the last fiscal, we're still finishing up our numbers for, for this, this year. Um, it was 147, uh, emergency responses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing none? Thank you. I, uh, it was, uh, it's, it is a very impressive service that you provide to the region, uh, and provide a, a significant improvement to the experience, uh, encountered by people suffering from sexual assault. So, uh, whatever happens here, thank you very much for all the work that your society does. So thank you.
Thank you. And an open invitation, I've been giving tours of the clinic and the space, uh, as it's provided to survivors, but also supports the work of police officers. Uh, so if there's any interest in seeing the space and, and how it serves the region, I'd be more than happy to arrange that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. And then item number P, request for financial assistance, $2,000 Women, Victoria Women's Transition House Society. Also a new one for us here. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone here from Victoria Transition House? Don't see any. Uh, are there any questions? And maybe staff can, if not, answer them, take them away if necessary. Councilor Green?
Through you, your worship, to staff, do we have any idea of how many clients are served? Oak Bay clients are served by the Women's Transition House? And I don't expect you to know really because it would be helpful to have someone from, from the Transition House.
Uh, your worship, uh, staff doesn't have that information available at hand, but we're, we'd be happy to bring that back.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, I'll leave that, uh, leave that. That's it for this session. So all of these grants are going to be considered later on, either tonight or at a future meeting, uh, depending on how late we go in the main budget. And, uh, we'll, uh, so anybody who's here for the, for the grant ask, it's probably not worth waiting around for the next two hours until we get to that, given that we might not. So, uh, please enjoy your evening, uh, more than we will. And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll let you know as soon as the, uh, the final numbers are decided upon. So thank you very much for coming up tonight. And with that, we are going on to item number two, which is a long-term financial planning. And we have, uh, a little memo here from Chief Administrative Officer. Um, and, uh, we'll, I'll give you, Ms. Varela, a chance to introduce it.
Thank you, your worship. Um, so the purpose of this memo really is to present a framework for long-term financial planning for the District of Oak Bay moving forward. And it's really sort of, uh, making sure that in a broad sense, uh, we have some benchmarks with which to go forward. The next step would be to bring you back a more fleshed-out, um, framework. But right now, we want to make sure we at least have the benchmarks, uh, flagged. So, uh, we do note a number of council objectives, uh, moving forward. And it was interesting because, because we got a piece of correspondence from a member of the public actually pointing out that, uh, perhaps we shouldn't be differentiating between council objectives and organizational department objectives. And I thought, that's a great lens on this. So, um, we'll incorporate that going forward. But right now, we're talking about, um, from staff's expectation is that council wants to align strategic planning with the development of the annual budget and the five-year plan. We want to see some adjusted timelines. We want to link service levels to budget. We want to develop a shared philosophy of budget, uh, and the, the financial reporting. We want to differentiate between core budget and one-time operating and capital projects. We want to foster adaptability and responsiveness to changing challenges and opportunities throughout the year. Uh, we'd like to see the budget process, uh, more automated. Uh, we want to foster enhanced opportunities for public engagement. Uh, we want to consider the use of innovative financial tools and other things that council might come up with. But at a high level, those are the sort of things that we've been hearing from council to date. Of course, on our horizon, uh, is also to look to achieving sustainable funding for services and infrastructure, managing expenditures effectively, uh, through operational excellence, and that shook out in your strategic priorities. Pursuing available alternative funding sources and preparing proactively for... and preparing proactively for contingencies. We're also going to be looking to those strategic priorities that at this point are still draft, but for the benefit of the gallery, I'll just go through those. Ensure access to diverse housing options within the built environment, achieve sustainable service delivery, provide service excellence, enhance and promote quality of life and sense of place, and demonstrate leadership in fostering community health and resilience. We also want to make sure we have a common understanding of the gaps we've identified, such as we'll be looking to implement some key performance indicators. We want to have a thorough discussion about corporate risk analysis, reserve funding, and of course, the high-profile idea of corporate and community infrastructure. So, look, if those are the expectations we can agree on, we want to talk about a draft layout of the long-term financial plan and the strong linkage between strategic planning and that document. So, if we were to go forward based on this approach, we'd be looking for basically four broad corners of that framework. One of them would be community vision and priorities, so where we want to be in the future. One would be financial planning, so including financial and human resources. We'd want to have some clear financial planning strategies, and these vary between communities. So, we'd have to make a maiden Oak Bay version, of course. And we want to talk a lot about measuring performance, so capacity assessment, service standards, service performance, and annual reporting. And there's a bit in there about best practices from the Government Finance Officers Association. So, I'll let you read that at your leisure. If we decide on that framework, then we want to talk about strategies that would support that framework. And those would involve predictable, sustainable infrastructure investment, recognized value for services, responsible debt management, competitive fees and taxes, appropriate reserves and surplus. And finally, it's proposed that that draft framework will include means to measure performance. And there's some next possible steps laid out in there. So, if council is supportive of what they've read in this memo and what they hear tonight, staff is recommending that council direct us to collaboratively develop an enhanced framework, so fleshing these ideas out for a long-term financial plan for the District of Oak Bay, based on the proposed draft layout contained in the staff report before you for future council consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Varela, and thank you for bringing this forward. Are there questions of Ms. Varela or staff in general? Councilor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you so much with our wonderful CIO providing this excellent approach on long-term financial planning. It's very much appreciated. I just wanted to ask that while it may be too late for this year, that we not forget many of the council motions that were brought forward in previous mandates, or I guess even previous to your arrival, that I believe still need to be considered at some point in this long-term financial planning. I make reference to, for example, the measures to mitigate steep slopes, which was a council motion moved forward, asking to refer to the priority session that unfortunately somehow got lost. The measures with respect to regulations for daycares, we made motion in council to refer to priorities, and unfortunately, that got lost. And there are actually a number of others. So, thank goodness we have electronic agendas and everything recorded electronically. It's actually fairly easy to find. The report out on council strategic priorities from the previous mandate actually, at the very end, had a rather long list. I don't know whether all of those items on the priorities from the previous mandate were all backed up by council motions, but I know many of them were. Another one I wanted to point out was, for example, development of a performance area at Turkey Head. These are items that definitely need to be folded into our planning, most likely starting when we begin our new schedule for budget, for budgeting, which I believe will be part of this long-term financial planning, where nothing happens at the last minute. So, thank you again for bringing this forward. I very much look forward to a new era in financial planning in Oak Bay.
Thank you, Councilor Zelka. Hi, Councilor Patterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Varela, for the report. I do have a question, though. There's a legislative requirement when you do annual reporting, that you have to have a progress report on the performance, a statement of objectives and measures. And so, for instance, this year's annual report, which will report on 2018, the performance measures that are in there should be for 2018. We didn't, I've never seen them yet in an annual report. And then, also feeding the ones for 2019. So, it's fine to work towards these objectives, but what do we do this year?
Is the question, what's going to be in the 2019 financial report? Is that the question?
Well, what are we going to use for performance measures this year? Yeah, I mean, definitely for 2019. Now, I don't know what council planned or what the discussions were for 2018, so I don't know what, if anything, has been done in that respect. So, I'm focusing on the go-forward, but we do have to come to terms with some definitive measures of performance.
Oops, button, Ms. Varela.
Thank you, your worship. So, as proposed, I think it was the February 23 meeting, that I actually talked about having a workshop with council to talk about the annual report. We are going to have some constraints, of course, because there is a deadline in June that the report has to be made available to the public. So, we are brainstorming on that right now. We want to come back and have a discussion with council about what staff feels is achievable for looking back on 2018, and at that same time, talk about steps going forward. So, we'll probably bring a couple examples of different annual reports, so that we're not just shooting darts into the dark, but we actually say, is this a report that council likes? What are the metrics you like to use? And actually cooperatively develop those metrics, so that we're in alignment on those. So, that's a great comment, Councilor Patterson. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, any changes people want to see to this? Okay, that's a good response. I have a couple little things. If, Councilor Green, you were going to make a motion, is that what you're jumping in for?
Well, no, I was just going to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Through your worship to Ms. Varela, thank you very much for the report, and certainly, I think it's laid out well. And thank you to staff who were involved in this. It's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Just two observations I had. One was on page three, item one, under the master plans. I believe at some point, and this is probably maybe even a question for Mr. Haran, but I, there are natural areas in our, in our, in the community that are not parks, foreshore, some erosion pieces of that nature, that probably might want to be just flagged as part of this, this long-term planning piece as well. Mr. Haran?
Just to clarify, your worship, indeed, and in the asset management program that talks about the different projects, there's a natural assets master plan, which still needs to be scoped and scheduled and determined, but it is part of the big picture of asset management for Oak Bay.
Yeah, and that's my understanding. So, I just, I saw, it wasn't explicitly listed in that list on here, so that maybe you should just make sure that we're, that's fine. I just want to, if it's, since it's in this report. And I think I would just make an observation that part of the conversation we've had around this table and offline has been risk, and sort of some of those key performance indicators and tying this, so we're, we're making decisions with eyes wide open in terms of what are the risks and these pieces. So, it doesn't have to be part of this at all, but I think that's going to probably be part of those key performance indicators going forward. It's just some sort of inclusion of that sort of risk assessment as part of, as we go forward. But other than, fantastic, thank you so much for this. I think it really helps give us a framework to kind of start working towards some long-term strategic planning and finance, financial planning. We do have a suggested motion here. If there's no other questions, I will.
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, Councilor Zelka?
I'm sorry, I actually had another question, but I guess I can fold it into the aspect.
Absolutely, the table's still open.
Fantastic. I just wanted to have some idea from staff, please, what, how do I say this? Performance measures, where they're going to be considered for the fifth item, surrounding demonstrating leadership and fostering community health and resilience with respect to the environment, environment sustainability. It wasn't quite clear with respect to this, whether we were going to be looking at the municipal natural assets management initiative or some other initiative. If I could have some clarity on that, that would be great. Thank you.
I think I can. Which, item number five, on which page?
Sorry, I'm referring to the. I apologize. The fifth item of the strategic, of the strategic, it'll be on page two?
Well, I see, just in the, in the strategic.
Demonstrate leadership and, no, health. What is it? What's the one about the environment?
Yep, that's.
Which one's the environment? This one talks about the environment, the fifth one on this one.
It's this one.
Fostering community, community health and resilience, yes. It's demonstrate leadership and fostering community health and resilience, which the, another report given earlier makes reference to, by committing economic, environmental, and social sustainability within district's operations and decision-making, which I believe has a lot to do with the environment.
Sure, I think it's actually on that item, page three, number one, the community vision and priorities, and it specifically lists the master plans being tied into that financial plan and the measures.
I appreciate that, but with respect to the master plan, what were the performance measures being considered? I see a lot of financial considerations, but I wasn't quite sure how we're going to know we're doing well with respect to the environment.
Ms. Varela?
So, again, back to the purpose of the memorandum is to present a framework that we would then revise and flesh out. So, I really wanted to know where our edges were. I've certainly heard that from council. If that isn't accurately reflected in this report, I apologize, but certainly it shakes out in the strategic priorities. And again, this is just a framework, so I hear loud and clear that will have to be fleshed out. So, thank you, Councilor Zelka.
Thank you. Seeing none of the questions? Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed? And I just want to express my appreciation for this document, for all the staff. I'm sure they contributed to it. It's, it's step one of, I think, some very, very, very solid long-term. It'll feed very much into our strategic priorities discussion going forward, as we have an iterative loop coming back for our financial plan maps to our strategic planning. So, thank you for that. Item number three, this is just a verbal update on the federal budget. I thought it'd be worthwhile, since Ms. Carter's here and able, to just give us a short verbal update in terms of some of the impacts of the federal budget that's been announced.
Thank you, your worship. So, this report is at a very high level at this point, as some of the details aren't yet known. But on March 19, 2019, the Federal Minister of Finance, Bill Morneau, presented the Liberal Government's final budget before the 2019 election. The federal budget includes several measures that will help municipalities across Canada, including the District of Oak Bay, prosper in the coming years. Some of the highlights include commitments on housing affordability, transitioning to a green economy, and workforce skills training. Government-led measures to increase housing affordability can be beneficial to the rental market, which is key to creating livable communities. Addressing climate change is a shared priority of many municipalities and the federal government as well. This includes the District of Oak Bay, and council should be proud of the fact that Oak Bay achieved carbon-neutral status in 2016. It's my understanding that there are already approximately 142 electric vehicle charging stations in the Capital Regional District, and the federal commitments are welcomed in order to further reduce emissions. The importance of strengthening relations, relationships with the indigenous community and moving towards reconciliation was also highlighted in the budget. Other budget announcements relevant to Oak Bay include a federal allocation of 9.1 million to support the construction of an indigenous legal lodge for the University of Victoria's Indigenous Legal Orders Program, which is the first of its kind, as I understand, a one-time transfer of 2.2 billion through the federal gas tax fund to address short-term infrastructure priorities, and a comprehensive plan to support lifelong workforce skills training. Gas tax funding can be used for infrastructure upgrades such as road rehabilitation, transit, community energy systems, and sport and recreation, to name a few. We'll watch closely in the coming weeks to obtain further information and ensure Oak Bay is well-positioned with regard to these initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much. We don't need a motion to receive, it's just a verbal update, so, thank you. Item number four, the budget update. This is really just a motion to receive, but are there any questions of council on the, actually, hold on a second, let me just get to my.
I lost the questions.
Yeah, no, this is a good place for us to talk. Councilor Zelka? Does anybody wish to do an introduction of this, this item? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, your worship, sure, I'll take a stab at that. So, at, a week ago, we talked about a number of the budget initiatives and various projects that the district might want to consider, and at that time, council asked us to follow up on a, on a few of those initiatives. And contained in this report are the recommendations of staff. So, I'll just quickly go through those. The first was a discussion around Microsoft 365 and Wi-Fi upgrades, and staff are recommending that we postpone those projects and really focus on a broader IT master plan, where we might fold those particular initiatives into, but to take a broader look at our IT services. There was discussion around the playground master plan that was being recommended by the Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission. Want to point out that we had an incorrect number in there. We had a number of $40,000, when in fact, in the budget, there was $25,000. So, the recommendation from staff is that that planning process be included in the broader Parks Recreation and Master Plan that is scheduled for 2021. And I think what we heard from council was that we should take $20,000 and use that either as seed funding to assist in fundraising for parks, or to actually make some changes in some parks. Council asked about the funding for the LED streetlight project, and we are recommending, so originally, $50,000, give or take, was being funded out of taxes, and now we are recommending that that $50,444 be funded from the Climate Action Reserve Fund. So, that would lessen the burden on taxes. We have recommended that the grant level be maintained at the same rate as last year, and you've considered those tonight. And I think what we are suggesting is that next week, unless you want to stay really late tonight, you can make decisions on how you disperse those funds. And the final recommendation, so if you were to maintain the same level of funding for grants, staff would be in a position to go away and actually prepare the financial plan bylaws that council is aware we need to have completed by May 15, which means two council meetings. And you've got staff here that are able to respond to questions that you may have thought of over the past week or that have come up today. Thank you.
And Ms. Carter wanted to add something to that as well?
Thank you, your worship. There are a few other items that are being suggested by staff since the last meeting, one of them being the strategic plan refresh that was in the budget for $10,000, and it's been suggested that that $10,000 will not be required if we're doing it in-house. There's also, we've had an opportunity to review our investment revenue for the last year, and we feel that we can, now that we're pretty much through year-end, we can increase that investment revenue amount by approximately $100,000.
that investment revenue amount by approximately 100,000. It was also suggested with regard to the website upgrade that that project be deferred, and also deferring the rec center Wi-Fi project, and the quail room floor being deferred for this for 17,000, and the network switch replacement for 20,000 could be pushed out because we won't be purchasing it next year, we would just simply be setting the funds aside. Thank you.
Thank you. My understanding of that, that that was put 20,000 in this year, 20,000 next year, and purchase them next year, is that is that correct?
That's correct. It'd be 20,000 for three years, and then the third year is when we would purchase that.
Okay, I'm not sure. By a wisdom of not, second that we're just going to have a bigger hit in the future, but that's okay. We had Councilor Green and then Councilor Zelka.
Yes, just for your information, your worship, I will be away next week when the grant applications are considered. Would it be appropriate for me to leave some remarks with you before I go? I I'm sorry, I won't be here, I really.
No, it's fine. In fact, we're just, we haven't finalized the the process for that. I I haven't really enjoyed the the grant discussion in past years, I have to say, where you start haggling over whether it's $1,000 or $1,100 for each of the applicants. Ms. Varela actually had a suggestion of a possible process that on the face of it will work very well, I think. So I think what I'll do today is probably not try and get to the final numbers, but capture those comments. So why don't we do that when we get to that point at the end of the meeting?
Thank you.
Councilor Zelka.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I, again, I'm I'm very, very pleased with the report as it's coming forward, and I have no problems with the suggested changes. There are plans afoot, and plans always change, as my wife keeps reminding me, man and woman plan, and God laughs. So we do our best. If you'll allow me, through the chair, I have a late question regarding a late priority that I just wanted some clarity on with respect to the previous item with this potentially additional money available through the enhanced gas tax granting possibilities. I just wanted to ask one question, if I may, through you, to the Director of Engineering with respect to the water supply redundancy priority from last year. I know we did the water main replacement, if I may, water main replacement, but did we actually get a full redundancy supply put in place for Oak Bay? I just wanted to ask about that, whether or whether we simply just replaced the main, but we still only have a single supply of water for Oak Bay?
Mr. Hran?
Through you, Chair, the those projects that are talked about in that strategic priority from 2016 onwards are all focused on the Henderson Road Water Main, which was not addressing the single point of failure in terms of the CRD's main at Lansdowne of Al Bay, but was addressing redundancy related to distributing that water from that point to the rest of the district. So the 20-inch water main that was done from 2016 through last year was definitely about resilience and flexibility in terms of handling water main failures at that point in the district.
Councilor Zelka?
That's very helpful with that with that clarity. I do recall some discussions, they may have not been at council, where the impression I was left with was that in addition to this wonderful resiliency that we're going to get, that we that we achieved, and thank you so much for that, potentially a second source of water might also be added either as part of the project or as a later date, and wondering whether the Director of Building and, excuse me, Director of Engineering would know whether adding a second supply of water into the district would be potentially eligible for a federal gas tax, and whether we wanted to continue that, just whether the funding would be possible.
Mr. Hran?
So through you, Chair, part of our, one of our major projects from the end of 2018, and which will be delivered shortly, is a water master plan, and part of that scope of work for our consultant was a number of things, water model, you know, asset management plan-related activity in terms of capital replacements, but also dealing with things like maintenance in terms of flushing and hydrant maintenance and things that we hadn't had done that are really core to keeping our water system operating properly, and as well, looking at redundancies and options. So I'm still waiting for that report to be delivered. I've seen drafts, so that part of that is deciding though what there are some opportunities in the future to to connect to different places, the City of Victoria, for example, or creating some other solutions to that redundancy problem, and those, once we've figured out what we'd like to do and define them, then they're just like any other capital project, they're subject available for grant applications.
Thank you very much for that clarity, and and I look forward to that master plan being folded into all the other master plans as part of our long-term financial planning. So thank you, that 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 gives me a good feeling and 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 solace knowing that we're moving forward and that our our water health is in good hands. So with respect to this report, I do have another question. In the executive summary and later on in the document, it talks about how there's a specific disbursement of $103,411 to be considered by council at a later meeting. What the heck is that about, please?
Those are the grants, I believe, Mr. Jones.
Your worship, that's the grants.
So the 211,000 is the grants unchanged, but the 103 is the additional? I'm sorry, just, which is which is what? I'm referring to paragraph number two in the executive summary, page one.
I believe there's, if I may jump in, I think it's 211,000 is total, including pass-throughs like BIA, and then then the 103 is the, is it broken out there? Oh, in the in the in the referrals. Ms. Carter?
Thank you, your worship. It's actually 113 in total. We were out 10,000 between our reports there, and what that is, is the difference between what council already allocates through, I'm going to say perpetual grants versus what's left to allocate out, and the 113,000 is actually what's left to allocate out.
Ms. Carter, just for clarity, that includes, you have typically left $10,000 in a grant fund sort of not allocated just so we have it available mid-year should we need it. Is that is that what the $10,000 difference is?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Zelka?
You actually had my question, that was it. Thank you very much, I appreciate this. So this this 103 then is part of what we'll be doing, I guess, with respect to grants, then, got it, in the wonderfully short process next time.
Wonderfully short process, that's the goal. Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and just as a follow-up to our Director of Engineering on the water redundancy, so in in pursuing that, would that require us to enter into agreements with adjacent districts for water redundancy? In other words, does it pass pass through those lands and and what would be required?
Mr. Hran, go ahead.
Through the chair, that's a good question, and it really depends on what solution we're talking about, but I'll just, as an example, to to answer the question, there would be considerations of metering and paying for the water, and then there's water quality and safety issues to consider, and so that it's not a a short-term, two- or three-month project, it's probably a longer-term, you know, we need to figure out what we'd like to do and then figure out how to make it happen, but that's, I think that's part of our strategic planning for the water system.
Any other questions of staff? Not seeing any, that's not, that's a good thing, typically, not always. Okay, I'll just say my piece on here. I I think the the revisions, as suggested, make a lot of sense to me. I think there's a couple of things that we were deferring in many ways because of the, we felt there might be some better ways of going about it. So I think the, I think that all we would ask as a council, what I've read here is is, you know, as as these projects are going forward, that we have, we have a good sense of where they're, you know, where they're tying into the into the sort of the internal operational strategy and make sure that we're not going down one path, especially on IT things, and I appreciate you pulling those pieces out. But things like the Wi-Fi should, you know, should we find a solution in the short term that we can find a an amenable piece? Obviously, we we can still look at that without it being in the budget. I think we're just talking about it's not not doing it in-house for that amount of money right away, so. And I really want to just express my appreciation for going back and 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 at the year with the cleaner year-end numbers, look for things like the investment revenue and pieces like that, to make sure that we're we're being realistic in terms of what we're actually expecting as part of this. I think this is probably an appropriate place before we get on to the 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 formal part of looking at the financial plan approvals and pieces and motions to be made. If there's anybody from the audience that wishes to come forward, this is probably the appropriate time to collect any other comments. Is there anybody from the audience that wishes to come forward? Sorry, two, so I've got one head shake, two head shakes, okay, we're we're okay. Okay, so back to this table again, then. We have the piece, so, sorry, we normally have this in front, we keep scrolling down. We're just receiving this report at this point, and then we're going to get to the financial plan for the more formal adaptation, is that correct?
Your worship, there are recommendations here to deal with those four items, and then the final recommendation is for staff to go away and prepare the actual financial plan and taxation bylaws.
Okay.
Based on the decision that council has made.
Thank you. Do we want those, let's go through them one at a time, just because I think it's important that we are very clear about what it is that we're doing here, because we have a couple of additional ones that Ms. Carter raised as well about the quail room, deferring, you know, adding the income investment, and the strategic plan review removal. So maybe what we'll do is we'll go through each of these, and then if we can just raise each of the points that you made, I just want to get a motion to to go down that path, so we're very clear in our our path forward. So the first one is the that the Microsoft 365 and Wi-Fi upgrades be canceled and that the district initiate IT master plan in 2020?
Move the staff recommendation.
Second?
I'm just going to deal with them one at a time, so if there's any other comments, then then we'll capture that at this point.
Second.
We've been seconded, is there any further discussion? Councilor Zelka?
Yes, with respect to this, I'm hoping as part of that IT master plan that we'll have an opportunity, whether through an informal task force or a committee or something, I would love to have an opportunity to 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 throw my two cents worth into something like that. So I don't know how they'll be structured, since I know some of us are just policy wonks, but some of us also have a few IT chops, so maybe the the mayor could be dragged into something like that as well.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I'm not going to, we're not going to determine the how at this point, just the whether. Any other discussion? Councilor Appleton?
Just very quickly, your worship, I just am definitely in support of this and appreciative of the staff for coming up with this, this this approach, definitely makes me feel a lot more comfortable about these two particular items than anything else that might crop up in the future.
Thank you. Seeing no other conversation, call the question, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed, to the playground master plan be moved and that $20,000 be allocated to a new playground or playground equipment? Okay, get a motion, and then we can conversation.
Move the staff recommendation.
Moved and seconded. Councilor Green?
Just a question for clarification. I recall our our discussion, I think we, did we not agree on the 20,000 for a specific playground improvement? Or was it and/or equipment? I'm sorry, I don't, can anyone refer, or I'm just looking for clarification.
I'm going to go over to Mr. Herman on that. My recollection of that was the, sorry, if you weren't paying attention, the question was just the playground equipment and their playground upgrade. My understanding, it was just to seed funding for a new playground that meets at a modern standards, as sort of essentially a trial or showcase playground that could be put in. Mr. Herman?
Your worship, I was not at that meeting, I would defer to.
Well, that's correct, you were not, Mr. Jones.
Your worship, so what staff took from that was the, you know, the commission talked about an idea of raising funds for for playgrounds and establishing some type of mechanism to do that. I want to be really clear, $20,000 is going to buy you very, very little in the way of playground equipment, so it is is more likely that this might be something that is a good seed funding if the subcommittee of the Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission is able to move forward with some fundraising initiatives.
And I believe that was the original intent, was that they were, they're planning on doing that, so. Okay, everybody comfortable with that number and that referral? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed. Item number three, just to shift some of the funding from the from taxes from to the Climate Action Reserve that we've been paying into for a while from as our carbon offsets?
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, opposed, unopposed. Item number four, that we just set the policy that we're keeping the grants the same this year as last year, and then we'll allocate them out of either a leadership day or or a future meeting?
Move the staff recommendation.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed, and then before we get to number five, I believe this is an appropriate place, Ms. Carter, those other items that you raised, if we could just sort of, if you could just remind us one by one what they were, just to make the to make the formal changes to what's in front of us.
Certainly, your worship. So the first one was the deferring this, or sorry, eliminating the strategic plan refresh as we would be able to do that in-house for 10,000.
So the motion would just be to strike that from the strategic, the financial plan?
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed, thank you.
Oh, a point of order, if I may.
Please.
With respect to the previous motion, is that 103,411 buried in it? Because I think it was it was changed to 113. Just wanted to know that we was the updated number we were actually approved, just want to confirm that.
Ms. Carter, just just tell us what your understanding, to make sure that we're all in agreement.
Your worship, it's a bit confusing because the the numbers are being discussed in in a different maze or in a different manner. So essentially, what we're doing is taking the amount of the grant that grants that we would have allocated last year, capping it at that, and so the 113,000 is actually the difference of the items that are non-perpetual. So for example, the BIA funds go through there, and that's not really a grant, so that's been taken off, and there's a few like that.
The 10 is included in the 113,000, not in the 103,000. Essentially, as a policy, we've kept 10,000 separate, so the 103 is not including that $10,000.
That's right. The $10,000 is in there. The $10,000 that you may be thinking of is we actually had the Baker Creek Coordinator position in the budget twice. We had put it in engineering as a line item and forgot to take it out of the grants as well, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item, Ms. Carter?
The next item is increasing the investment revenue by 100,000 to more closely reflect the reality of what we recognized in, actually recognized in 2018.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I probably don't actually need a motion for this one, really, but we'll we'll do it any, actually, you know what, let's not, I don't, we shouldn't have a motion on this.
Motion withdrawn.
This is not a policy piece, it's just, actually, I'll get advice here, I'll turn to someone in the staff. You know, actually, it probably doesn't need to be, but since we've made the motion, I'll let it stand, largely because I think we have a published financial plan, and this records the fact that it's it's being changed with eyes wide open that we're we're just recognizing pieces, so we'll have them, we have, so we have a mover and a seconder. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all all in favor, opposed, unopposed. Thank you, sorry, Ms. Carter, to interrupt that.
Thank you, your worship. The next item is deferring the website upgrade for savings of 30,000 in 2019.
Thank you.
I guess I'll move it.
Moved, seconded, seconded by Councilor Green, doesn't, we don't record it, as long as just want to make sure that's what you were doing with your hand up?
Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion? Councilor Green?
Just a question through you, worship, to Ms. Carter, how will that, will that impede our ability to communicate through the website any more effectively if we defer it? I mean, is it, how critical is it, I guess, would be my question. Thank you.
Your worship, one of the things that's included in the budget is some additional funds of $6,000 to allow us to do some maintenance upgrades. The reason we're deferring this work is we simply, from a staff perspective, cannot do it this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Councilor Zelka?
Can I assume that the IT master plan will touch upon this item in the next year?
Your worship, that would absolutely be something we'd consider in that process.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed, and I, my hope and expectation is that we will be, especially if we have some, some additional help internally and communications pieces that we're, there are changes we can make to that website incrementally as well, that, that would be very beneficial, I think, in time. Ms. Carter?
Thank you, your worship. The next one is similar in that it will come out in the IT uh, master plan, and that is deferring the rec center Wi-Fi for seventy-five thousand in twenty nineteen.
Already done? There we go. Yep, we're done on that one, so, Ms. Carter, next one?
The next one is deferring the quail room floor for seventeen thousand.
Uh, and we haven't had a lot of discussion on this one, so i- is this something that you or Mr. Herman can just talk to quickly about the, the rationale for deferring this? We have our sort of a question muttering up here, which one is the quail room? If you can maybe answer that question as well?
Sure, your worship, the quail room is uh, is up at Henderson Rec Center, it's in the back, so um, that's a room that's undergone some changes over the years, and is now being used largely for spin classes and, and some TRX classes um, that, as, as well as some childcare um, programs. So it's got a tile floor that is starting to show, it's, I believe, approximately thirty years old. Starting to show its uh, life, but it's not critical. If this is uh, deferred, you will likely see it again next year, the, a request, but um, staff feel that we can get by another year with that flooring.
Thank you. Are there any questions? And there's no, it's not like this would increase the cost the following year if it is not going to damage any substrate or anything else by leaving it in?
No, and in fact, uh, the, the intent is to change the type of flooring that's in there to be more in line with the activities that now take place in that room.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Green?
And through you, your worship, and so, Mr. Herman, there's no public health or safety risk in, in deferring this?
Uh, through the chair, absolutely not.
Thank you.
It just hurts the eyes. Yeah. Uh, so we, we need a motion to, to approve that?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed, Ms. Carter?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, the next one is deferring the network switch replacement for twenty thousand dollars in twenty nineteen.
Is there a mover for that?
I'll move it, sure.
I'll second.
Uh, is there an appetite to do this?
Uh, I, I would love to know what the net effect would be and whether um, uh, it puts uh, communications with the public at risk.
Ms. Carter?
Through you, worship, um, no, it wouldn't put communications at risk. We wouldn't be spending the twenty thousand in twenty nineteen anyways, but what we would be doing uh, in the future is bumping up. For example, in twenty twenty, we would likely be asking for additional funds so that we can still replace it the following year.
Uh, personally, I don't, I don't want to do this. I don't, I don't think that pretending it's not going to happen and deferring it is a good policy in general, so if we recognize the need in three years' time, I'd rather spend thirty, twenty thousand dollars a year for three years than sixty in one. Um, that's just me. I don't know how the rest of council's feeling on this one. Uh, we can just call the question and find out, I guess, unless there's any other discussion? Counselor Zelka?
Uh, is the intention to spend thirty and thirty, or sixty in, in ones? What's the intention, Mayor?
Through you, worship, the intention would be to spend thirty and thirty.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Counselor Appleton?
So just to clarify, then we're talking about thirty and thirty in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, through you to staff?
Correct.
Through you, worship, that's correct.
Yeah. Again, I'm not, I can't support that, I just don't think it's a, there's no particular advantage to deferring it, and we don't know what cost pressure is going to be on next year, we're better off to my mind, funding it, but that's my particular opinion. Um, any other discussion? All right, I'll call the question to remove the twenty thousand dollars. All those in favor? Opposed? To oppose, it passes? That comes out, Ms. Carter?
Your worship, the one last adjustment uh, that we are bringing forward uh, just for council approval is the HR adjustments that were discussed in closed meeting.
Do we need to have the number dollar pieces in that, or just the changes as the?
I would suggest just the changes as the minutes from the in-camera will reflect the amounts.
Okay, thank you. This is the motion that was passed in camera, okay. So the motion here would just be to uh, right, to include it in the strategic plan, any changes uh, approved in the in-camera meeting related to HR changes. Thank you. Uh, can I get that motion?
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? Does that conclude our pieces of this? Okay. Okay, uh, I don't think there's anything else, I'm just gonna look to staff, anything else on this item that we have to go through on the report now? Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, worship. Just a matter of procedure, I just noticed that uh, that the last recommendation here from staff is to complete the financial plan and taxation bylaws. I noticed it's also included as a recommendation in the next item on the agenda, so I'm just wondering procedurally how, how that gets handled.
Yeah, I was thinking I might just take that, that recommendation to the next item, since it's on the agenda. And because if there's any questions on that financial plan, draft financial plan, then that's the right place to do it before we have that motion. I think we would inevitably get to the question uh, at that point, so with, with council's indulgence, I'll just move on to the next item. Um, and I'll just, before I do that, is there any other changes that council wishes to see made before I move it on? Okay, thank you. Um, on to item number five, draft twenty nineteen twenty-three financial plan. Um, subject to those changes as, as just made. Um, the recommendation here from council, just to direct staff to complete that financial plan with those changes and generate the taxation bylaws. Um, Counselor Zelka, you look, you said you had a question?
It was regarding the previous item, and it's been answered, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Comments, before I call the question, item number five? Let's see. Okay, no, uh, I just need a motion then on?
I will make the motion that council provide direction to staff for completion of the district's two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-three financial plan bylaws.
And, and taxation bylaws, yes. Uh, seconder? I need someone to second it, I can't do it. Moved and seconded, thank you, thank you, Counselor Day. Uh, are there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed, thank you very much. Well, that brings us to our uh, uh, the grants. Um, I guess, I, I don't want to get into the grants tonight in some sense than that, but I do want to make sure that we capture any sort of key thoughts as we go through them. So what I would think all we'll do with council's indulgence, we'll just run back through these, is there any sort of comments on, I think what we're gonna find when we sit down with the numbers and try and get to the magical hundred and three thousand dollar numbers that we're gonna have to have some pain as we try and decide what we're not gonna fund? Um, because as always, there are always so many wonderful things that we'd love to fund. So uh, I believe we can come back with a, with a little process next time that will make for a fairly easy discussion on that, as we kind of collect our, our, our information individually and collate it. Um, but I do want to make sure, so Counselor Green, you're not going to be here, I'd like to hear any comments that you have um, and anything else from council's perspective um, that might guide it. I also just want to point out uh, to council, I just had this printed and left on your, on your counter, it's, it's worth remembering, council did adopt a grant policy uh, just a few years ago. Uh, and it's fairly helpful, I think, just in terms of clarifying um, when trying to decide between uh, different pieces and some of the philosophy attached. It's non-binding, um, essentially, you can, you don't have to uh, follow the guidelines there, but there were, there was some effort put into, to come up with them to kind of create that framework for decision-making. Uh, Counselor Green?
Gosh, thank you, I didn't expect to be put on the spot tonight. Um, well, I, you know, I, I really, um, I don't have opposition to anything in particular, but I think if we're looking at priorities, and if we do look at the grant policy report, which is very helpful, thank you. Um, I think we should focus on those organizations that do provide services in Oak Bay to Oak Bay residents wherever possible. And one of the ones that I would hope we might give some money to, certainly not the full request, but that would be the um, Oak Bay Sea Rescue Society. We are a marine uh, community. They provide a tremendous service, being an old boater, or not an old boater, a former boater. I know how important they are, and they are part of our wider emergency services in fire and police as well, and I'm sure that um, that both Ms. Chief Hughes and Chief Britton could attest to the fact that they probably work together at times and coordinate their work. So I would like us to, to give them something, and it certainly doesn't have to be um, the entire sixty, one hundred and fifty dollars, but I think it would be important for us to demonstrate that they are of value to us. That's one. Um, the other one is the Victoria Sexual Assault Center. Um, and I was um, interested in the fact that, that there, eleven percent of our residents are served by that that center. I think it does provide incredible service, and I would hope that we could give them something. Obviously not the full ten thousand, because we are stretched and we, we have competing interests, but that would be one that I would support. And also the Victoria Women's Transition House Society. Something nominal, but, but, you know, something to help them. Because I'm sure, um, while there was no one here to represent them, I know there are a number of residents from Oak Bay each year that do, do benefit. And the others, I, I really have, have really no quarrel with. The North Oak Bay Community Association, I would, I would like to help them and support them. But I really think we have tried to follow a principle um, in supporting community associations that are actual societies. So I think that's um, important, and so it may not qualify, but I, I certainly think we should encourage them to follow that path towards establishing themselves as a society. Um, the Canadian Francophone games, I'm not sure about, but I will leave that to my colleagues. Um, and those were, those were the major ones for me. Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to give that input.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Uh, is there anything else? I mean, it's, it's a bit of an awkward, since we're not gonna be making decisions tonight on it, but if there's anything else that people want to raise uh, philosophically or any specific item, Counselor Zelka?
Uh, just want some clarification. Um, if I remember correctly, a year or two ago, Friends of Uplands Park was asked if they were a society, they said no. But their application now says they are a registered society. And does anyone have any clarity on that?
That's correct, they became a society.
They did.
This last year.
All right, thank you.
That's, I was congratulating her on becoming a society when. Ms. Litke came forward. Uh, anything else? Uh, Counsel, Counselor Appleton?
Uh, thank you, worship. I was just, I, I would, i- it's, it's more a, a request for discussion around the council table. Um, and when I look at the grants that are, that are presented for review here, I note that um, they're not necessarily flow-through grants, but they're grants where the requesting organization has essentially requested the same amount that they were granted for the year previous, and so um, and I think that there's uh, it, at least in my mind, and I may be misinterpreting this, but there seems to be general support for most of the organizations that, that are in there, and so I'm just wondering what the appetite, just to keep things simpler and, and more uh, more efficient, I'm just wondering what the appetite might be around the council table for uh, uh, potentially just approving the grants for, for those organizations that have requested the same grant as they did the, the year previous. So by, by my count, that includes the City of Victoria, the Community Association of Oak Bay, Friends of Uplands Park, uh, Bike to Work Week, Creator Victoria, also Oak Bay Volunteer Services, and the Film Commission. Uh, so, and, and granted, that is not, that's about, probably about half of what we would be granting, but uh, just as a, as a, as a suggestion for, for efficiency, but that may be making things more complicated instead of less.
Uh, I mean, I just have something we can discuss. I, I, I personally believe that, you know, the, the hard part of this is trying to weigh that those pieces, and I, you know, if we go through and look at some of the financial statements, you know, sometimes those grants have been granted for two or three years, and now they've got a kitty of, say, four or five thousand dollars, and they're asking for another thousand, you may say, well, given this year's context, that may not make sense. Um, and specifically in the grant policy, where it does say, we're not here to kind of constantly fund. Um, the idea is really to, to try and focus on specific uh, events, uh, things that have very direct benefit to the community, and, and there's been certainly times in the past, and this, this council does not have to follow that, that policy of uh, declining asks that sort of support their operations, but saying, but we would like to support a, an event and had that come back with a, with more specific funding for an event later on uh, where we actually funded a specific event as opposed to sort of generally, uh, the general things that they do in the community. So you may find that as you go through that, that list, and, and and the reason I'm, I'm kind of keen on deferring this a little bit is, is Ms. Varela brought forward an idea that she's done in the past that I think is, could be quite compelling, where we all essentially uh, take this list, create our own uh, numbers, come back, and we just, we, we can use it as, essentially average. Uh, you know, if we take that max amount, we, we distribute it, and then we average out that amount across the piece, and that would actually allow us to essentially get to that number uh, on a shared consensus model without having to argue vociferously in any one, one piece, uh, and could be done very quickly. I, I haven't quite worked out the mechanisms of how we might do that within the confines of public debate, et cetera, but I, I like that idea, so on, but it was just before this meeting, so I'm gonna take that away, try and, try and do it, maybe we can get through that in a very short order without having to have too much too much argument about it, so. Uh, so we'll, we'll, we'll leave it at that for now, I think. Uh, that'd be my preference. Ultimately, if council wants to make a motion, just to, to do something like you said, you can, you can make that motion at this time. Okay. Okay, then I believe, Ms. Carter?
Your worship, I'd like to bring your attention just to one more item on the grant list, and it's the item called Integrated Recreation, and that really should be a line on its own. It's funded by council each year, and unfortunately, it wasn't deducted out of that hundred and thirteen thousand that you have to allocate, so if council wishes to go forward with that amount for the integrated recreation, again, that would drop your balance to allocate to one oh six, three, four, six.
We have, we have multiple lists here, so there's nothing in our electronic agenda, so I'm going to the, to the paper one that, that is known, it's this one in our, in the, but this was not, not everybody got this binder. So this was not circulated to everybody in that, in that, so I don't think we can all speak to, maybe you can just explain what it is that you're, you're referring to? Integrated Recreation, I see it as a line item of seven thousand sixty-five?
That's the one, yes, and, and the report I'm actually looking at, there's a, in a, in the uh, grant uh, report that was on tonight's agenda, this was an attachment to that report.
Okay. In, or an attachment to the, to the staff report? Uh, addenda report, ninety, okay, perfect. So I just encourage everybody to read that prior to the, as, as they come back to this table. Okay, thank you. Good. Anything else that we need to cover off here tonight, staff? Ms. Varela?
Uh, just that we will uh, re-clarify the amounts, the projects, what council has to allocate, we'll put that in a, an easy form. Uh, and if council chooses to do a more streamlined approach, then it's a bit of homework, and then it's discussion in uh, open forum, so you and I can discuss that, your worship, and propose that for the agenda.
That'd be great, thank you very much. All right, uh, well, just before we adjourn, I would like to just say on the record that how much I appreciate all the work that's gone in behind the scenes, I you know, we, we stepped into this sort of well, well into a, a budgeting process, and we sort of asked staff to make a hard right turn and and try and look at this within a strategic planning priorities process that uh, uh, we've done for the first time in a new format and, and done that, and, and should have iteratively come to this and, and frankly spent more time at the sort of philosophical high level than down in the weeds, and I, I appreciate that. I think it's given us a chance to kind of make some pretty hard decisions in terms of some of the numbers. But I think, I feel, you know, that these are, are really important for us to have these, these, these funds, and it really set the, the long-term financial plan that, that gives some, some cost certainty to infrastructure spending in this, in this thing, but that will ultimately drive down the cost of these projects significantly as we go forward, so, uh, Counselor Zelka, you wanted to add?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, just a quick question, we are, we are rounding process when we get to the grants, uh, the next meeting. Uh, is the ten thousand dollars going to be held um, um, in abeyance for us to look at whatever's left in terms of the allocation, or will that be factored in in this process? Just wanted to know, um, uh, because I was hoping we could hold back that ten, because we have no idea what's gonna be coming forward in the next three hundred and sixty-five days.
Ms. Carter?
That's right, uh, through you, worship, we will hold back the ten thousand so that council has some discretion throughout the year to allocate.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just, uh, I guess the comment on this is, you know, I, I, I think this budget process this year has well, it's, it's a, it's a work in progress. It's a, it's a, a strong step forward, but still a work in progress. I guess, um, just referring back to a memo that we had from uh, Mr. Jones, and um, and it goes back to the Engineering's Department and the, the items that are in the budget that are uh, included in the asset management program, because it does leave us with because it does leave us with a shortfall going through to two thousand and twenty-three of about eleven million dollars in those categories. So um, you know, I, I, I think we have to strongly state that there still is a great deal of work to be done there because I don't think we want to um, leave people with the impression that we have somehow magically come up with a solution this, this year, and and so that's still a a significant shortfall from where we need to be, considering the asset management report was dated two thousand and sixteen, and this budget is planning to go through to two thousand and twenty-three, so that's just my comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. We do have a lot of work to do. Absolutely. Uh, all right, with that, we need a motion to adjourn? Moved?
Second.
Seconded, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, not opposed?